I'd like to welcome you to the Municipal of Monroeville Citizens Night for April 6th, 2016. It's approximately 7:05. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm sitting in for Mayor Sinco tonight. He is a little under the weather and he apologizes, of course. He loves being here, but I'll take the gavel for the evening. So, we're going to start the meeting with citizens' remarks and comments. This is your time. Is there a sign up sheet?
There is.
Okay, Bob Stevenson, please.
Deputy Mayor, Council, Manager Little, Solicitor Ratcher, staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a citizen of Monroeville. I'm also Chairman of Zoning Hearing Board from Monroeville, and I'm here in that regard to see me. About a month and a half, two months ago, I received a letter in the mail addressed to the chairman. And I opened the letter and low and behold, it was the resignation of our solicitor. I was a little upset at that time, but I did some checking and found out that he gave up our board for this one. And I can understand that. So, congratulations, Bob, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And I'm here tonight to present a plaque to Bob for his service on our board.
Oh.
So, if you'll give him a moment to open it and read it, I'd appreciate that.
That's very nice.
This is presented to Robert J. Ratcher with sincere appreciation for 25 years' service, years of dedicated service to the Monroeville Zoning Hearing Board. You guys not only took our attorney, you took a good friend. But bless him, he's a good man.
Fantastic.
A photo op.
Really nice.
Let me put all this up here, too. And that's it. Thank you very much.
That's very nice, Bob. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
Congratulations, Robert. Twenty-five years of service. It's great. You must have started whenever you were...
Fourteen.
Fourteen or so.
(laughing).
Okay, Robert Seraphini, please.
Good evening. My name is Robert Seraphini. I'm a Monroeville resident. Mine is going to be short and sweet also. I just wanted to say something about Mike Adams. We didn't have that much snow this winter, but he took care of the roads, and I want him to say thank you for all he did for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. All right. Off to a good start here this evening. All right, very positive. Okay, next one on the list.
Rick McGrath? No, no, Dr. Edelstein. I'm sorry. Dr. Edelstein is next.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us. I'm Norman Edelstein. I'm representing the Homeowners Association of Red Oak Court. This is Citizens Night, and we have a significant public safety issue. Our development is over 25 years old, and we're seventeen families, most of which have lived here for over two decades. We're long-term, significant taxpayers, and dependable residents who started two and a half decades ago with a level walkable vacant land all along the east side of our street. Unanticipated, but common in this area, the hillside has eroded with a textbook slope slide that endangers the stability of Red Oak Court itself. This has been confirmed by your engineering department and by your municipality's private engineers. The issues include that the municipality was notified of this matter two years ago and was going to address it. Some of our members were advised by municipal officials and by Public Works crews of remedial efforts to start last summer in 2015 and over the winter, but the work was not started. The slide has worsened, and recently worsened. It's now to the street edge. Indeed, two of the four safety reflector poles, which the municipality installed in the municipal right-of-way a year ago fell two weeks ago as the earth has slid more with erosion of easement, and now our street light and utilities are impaired. Our members and citizens fear for their safety and welfare. If the street fails, how would ambulances and fire response teams and so forth reach the families as the street is a dead-end cul-de-sac? In other words, the assurances by the municipality of same-day repairs on an emergency basis have not put to rest our concerns because this is a cul-de-sac. There's no access to those homes other than the street, and if it fails, how do you get to them? In summary, from our homeowners' association with its two blocks of homes, we appreciate working with the mayor, who I've spoken with, with Mr. Little, and with our councilman, but we want council to be formally aware of the situation to include the safety issue with the need for emergency repairs if they occur, and how would you handle the problems? What happened to the Public Works efforts anticipated a year ago? We feel that a sensible fiscal policy from residents who have paid a lot of taxes over many years, would it not be easier, cheaper, and safer to protect our welfare and to authorize the work needed to stabilize the hillside now and prevent a major street failure? As President of the Homeowners Association, I've been asked to explain to our members, allow them to understand what does the municipality intend to do and when, so that the integrity of Red Oak Court is protected since that is the responsibility of the municipality. Are there any questions I can answer about this or comments, so that I can get back to our members?
Well, at this point, Dr. Edelstein, I mean, we certainly are aware of the situation, and we certainly take the public safety issue very seriously. At this point, we are doing our due diligence. The landslide is on private property, so we have notified the property owners, and that's step one in all of this. And Bob, if you could touch base on that.
Yeah. We've obviously, and I think you're aware of this, Dr. Edelstein, we've notified the property owners. Now, we realize that they may not all respond to us with respect to those lots. We're prepared to take further action if they do not respond to us. The municipality is also aware of the fact that at some point, if there's a further landslide and the road starts to deteriorate, the municipality has an obviously an obligation to the residents of Red Oak Court to make sure that street's passable and it's not unsafe. So, we also had the engineer, the engineer, a geotechnical engineer, Paul?
Yes, geotechnical.
We had a geotechnical engineer come over and take a preliminary look at it. Paul could probably elaborate on that a little bit, but there's a lot we don't know yet about the slide that we're trying to determine, to determine what we do from here.
Well, let me ask two things. First, relative to the public, the private ownership, and I've discussed it with Mr. Little, with the mayor, the main culprit lot, the one where the slide is occurring, is owned by the original developer corporation that went out of business 20 years ago. The municipality is well aware of that because the prior solicitor had to go after their bonding company. They haven't paid taxes in 20 years. So, you've written to an organization that hasn't existed for 20 years. I don't know, you won't get a response from them?
No, we understand that.
Okay.
We understand that, but we still have an obligation to go through that due diligence because if there was any possibility that a third party, a private party, where the problem actually started, that that party could be a party to the solution, we obviously have an obligation to all the taxpayers of Monroeville to try to pursue that.
That's correct. But since they don't exist, and then going forward, if something happened of a catastrophic nature and you couldn't get down the street, what happens to the folks who live down there? You can't get ambulances and fireworks. There's no other way to access all those homes.
Absolutely. You're correct. There's not.
Well, we'd have to take emergency measures at that point.
But how, what happens if doing the emergency measures, there's a fire, somebody has a heart attack. What happens then? I don't, how do emergency measures open the road quickly?
I mean, there's certain procedures that you could follow as far as even lane restrictions on the road. I mean, if the road starts to deteriorate, then you have to close one lane down. You still have a single lane to get through.
What happens to two lanes when, I mean, we've seen California slides and so forth where this is happening?
We could have an earthquake tomorrow also that takes out the road. I mean, we're talking about a lot of hypothetical situations. We're talking about it internally and how to deal with it.
Okay. Well, if the, can I tell our members then that if the, once you ascertain that the privacy issues are not getting back to you, is the municipality going to be proactive before the road fails and try to stabilize it? That's their question, so that it doesn't fail.
Yeah, I think that's ultimately a decision for council to make and not me, but I have to tell you that council is aware of it, and they do intend to both find out what it's going to take to solve the problem, and at the same time, go on the track that we're also on with regard to the notifications, so that we, you know, so we've done our due diligence in that respect.
So, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I mean, you know, I mean, basically, I just don't know what to say to people. Can we assume that once the due diligence is done, if, and you've gone through that process, could the road be addressed before it fails, to stabilize the hillside? Is that the goal of the municipality?
The goal, the goal is certainly to make sure that that road is functional and is, you know, passable for emergency vehicles and for the residents, just forget emergencies, even just for, you know, residential use. But it is one step at a time. But we are certainly aware of it. We're all very serious about it, and we definitely make sure that it's taken care of. But once again, it's one step at a time. We have to find out the best way to do it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rick McGrath.
My name is Rick McGrath. I live at 108 Wiltshire Circle. That's in the Royal Oaks section of Monroeville. It's on the far side of Route 286. I'm sure several of you have never been over there, but we're kind of like the ugly cousin or something. But anyhow, I just found out about an hour or so ago that you were going to be discussing the roads situation at this meeting, and if I could, could I withhold my comments until after that discussion? Because maybe some of my serious problems will be corrected, you know, and I won't have to get back up here and discuss.
Are we discussing this any further?
On the resurfacing program?
The resurfacing?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Any other residents would like to speak this time?
Is that you?
Okay, we're going to close that portion of the meeting and move over to our agenda-setting meeting for Tuesday's April 12th meeting. There's an executive session announcement. Council conducted an executive session for personnel and litigation reasons before tonight's Citizens Night, beginning at 6:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. Council legislative action, if any, shall be taken at the April 12th, 2016 council meeting. Moving over to our minutes. We have the Citizens Night meeting of March 3rd, the council work session of March 3rd, and the regular council meeting of March 8th. Any questions or additions, changes, council? Okay. Seeing none. Reports of the tax collections. Any additions or questions for the report of the, from the tax collector?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing none. List of bills, budget transfers, payroll. We'll start down, Mr. Wilson. Any questions for your list of bills, Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson?
Roll call. No. Should we do a roll call?
We do that Tuesday's night, Tuesday night's meeting. We'll do a roll call. Roll call.
The agenda says for April 6th, the meeting called the order, then roll call.
No, that's...
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And what was your question? I'm sorry.
My question to you was, do you have, do you have any questions for the list of bills, budget transfers, payroll for this evening?
Yeah, I do. On budget transfers.
Floor is yours.
On page 56 of the budget transfers, we have... Auto parts. We went to White Oak to buy auto parts. Why don't we buy auto parts in Monroeville?
I don't know necessarily, Tom, if that, if that was from White Oak. I don't know that.
Well, let's see.
I'll have to talk to Mike Adams about that.
Yeah.
Sean, unless you can shed any light on that. I can talk to Mike about it.
I'd have to talk to Mike about that, Tim, but it does say NAPA Auto Parts of White Oak.
Eight hundred, $883. Okay. Next case. Page 63. Okay, on page 63, they had Service Master do some janitorial service at the library for $1,875, and it's not a local Service Master group. Why not?
Oh, the library has been, has contracted with them for...
Well, don't we have control over the library? Don't we tell the library how to spend their money?
Hmm, not, not on that end.
What do you mean, we don't? I don't understand that.
I'll take it up with them.
Please. Okay. Let's see. Page 43. Okay. Page 43. Shaun Lally. Unit's airfare reimbursement. Is that for a conference you went on?
Yes, that's on our computer accounting system.
Okay, yes, I know. Okay, thank you. Then page 49. Marmac Tire Incorporated. $3,044. I believe they're in New Kensington, right?
Their, their address is New Kensington. I don't think they're in New Kensington.
Okay. My question is, why aren't we dealing in Monroeville?
We do.
Well, that isn't, that wasn't dealt in Monroeville.
Well, there's certain tires we have to get at Marmac.
I'm sorry?
There are certain tires we have to get at Marmac.
I don't believe that's correct.
Yeah, I've talked to Dom extensively about this. We get some tires from McGill's, and we get other ones from Goodyear. All the police tires...
Yeah, but...
I believe it's the ply, ply rating, or there's something that was explained to me on that process that they're not available. I'm just, I'm not sticking up for...
I know, I know, I know.
I'm just trying to give you a slight explanation.
I want somebody to look into that. I want an answer. And I want to know if these tires were available through McGill or...
Sure.
Or not through McGill.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Partly, or...
Yeah, if they're available through McGill, we should be going to McGill or somebody else in Monroeville.
I can tell you that part of it is because Marmac comes...
They'll, they'll do an investigation. They'll tell me if the tires are available through McGill and if they're not available through McGill. Correct?
The tires are available a lot of places. The service is not.
Well, let's find out. Let's find out why they didn't purchase them from a Monroeville...
What I'm saying to you is that Marmac comes to the location...
Right, right. I want to know why they weren't purchased from a Monroeville company.
Trying to tell you that.
He could tell me that when he finds out all the answers for me.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you. I'm done.
Mr. Harvey, just clarify. So, the service, is that actually putting the wheel, the tires on the wheels, correct?
Right, at the location of the truck.
Okay. Mr. Duncan, any questions?
I have none.
Mr. Clary?
Just one about the addendum, the bill list for the disability pension payment. I just don't understand that increase.
Well, the, the officer who is on disability pension, the insurance company only covered that for two years, and this is the second, this is the anniversary of when his pension disability started. So, the, under the police contract, we have to pick up the whole tab beginning in April or March.
That means that individual has not gone to work anywhere?
I would have no idea on that, not as a police officer, I would imagine.
Well, we wouldn't have to pay a disability payment if he was working, correct?
I think that if you wanted to discuss this further, we can move into an executive session. I would say that. Okay? Because it's dealing with the personnel.
On any case, wouldn't you need an investigative body to do, you know...
I would, I would urge council, if you want to discuss this further, to adjourn to executive session, if you want to, and we can discuss it there.
I, I knew it was coming there.
Yeah, I just didn't realize it was already.
I don't understand.
Wait, honestly.
Council is...
I'm good.
I don't have a need to talk.
Mr. Clary, do you have any other questions for list of bills?
All I have, sir.
Mr. Johns?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Harvey?
Nothing.
Mrs. Gatos?
The only question I have, it's not exactly in the list of bills, but it had to do with the library, and I contacted Mr. Little about it, is a seminar, a learning seminar they're going on. It's, they say that they have the money, and it's like over $8,000, but it still doesn't make sense to me. When we ask everyone to cut back, that they're taking, I understand, maybe even a secretary with them?
There's three, there's, yeah, there's, Nicole told me that the library director, they're going to a national conference in Colorado. She and the assistant library director and a librarian are going there to Colorado for the, I don't know the name of the conference.
ACLA. ACLA?
ACLA.
Is that kind of a mandatory thing that we, I mean, you know, it costs almost $10,000 to go for three people?
No, no, it's not costing that much. They have $8,000 budgeted.
Okay.
And how much it's costing.
How many conferences do they go to a year?
I have no idea.
This is the only one.
This is it?
This is the one they go to, and this is, ACLA provides them with a lot of grants and operate, grants for operating and stuff like that.
Okay. All right. So, just so that if anyone hears that they're doing that, it's clarified as to that it's budgeted for, and they go, and that's the reason why. So, that's all I wanted to bring up.
Very good. No other questions?
I mean, one thing I'd like to mention to council about the library, you control purse strings that you give money to the library. Okay? That is your control with the library. Under the state code, the library is controlled by the library board. Okay? But you give money to the library, and you give a substantial amount, close to a million dollars every year. Now, they do get money from the county, and they get money from the state, which under the budget, to answer Mrs. Gatos's question, they are using the money to go to this conference in Colorado from the money they get from the county, I believe it is, which is what Mr. Clary said, Allegheny County Library Association. Now, you could say that, well, yeah, but that's less money that they would get from us. You control the purse strings on what you give to the library. That's your control factor.
And understanding that, it's, with any grant, money's earmarked, where you can spend it here and you can't spend it there. I did talk to Nicole about it a little bit, and this is kind of one of those, this is one of those situations where it's money that can be used on this, but really couldn't be used for...
To fix the front step or something.
Right.
Okay. I just think it's good that people understand so that they don't think that they're blowing money that, you know, we're giving them and using incorrectly. So...
Very good. Moving over to our bids and proposals.
All right. I interrupted you for a second. And I don't mean to do that. I know we're going to jump, but on the vacancies, I know we don't talk about it, but on the vacancies and boards, we don't do till Tuesday, and I get it.
Yes.
But on the, since we're talking about the library, the library board, we have a gentleman by the name of David English from Lully Drive, which is in my ward, and I apologize. I've asked three or four people. Nobody seems to have seen a letter from him. So, I'm guessing I'm asking Mr. Little if he could look into that, because he would be nominated on Tuesday, but I can't seem to get any.
Yeah, I'll look, I'll look into that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I...
Is the address the only contact information we have?
Uh, yes. Uh, yes. Thank you, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no problem at all.
I just wanted to...
So, Mr. English, if you're listening, get a hold of your councilman.
There you go.
Okay, twenty sixteen commodity bids, we have an attached list, Mr. Little, I'll hand that over to you.
We accepted the bids for the commodities last Thursday, as we do annually in March, and Council can see, the ones that are highlighted are the low bids, I'm not gonna go through all of them, Council can see, and what we usually do each year is pass this at the council meeting with one motion, we're not gonna go through each line item, that would take a long time, but if Council has any questions this evening or between now and Tuesday, you can call me or you can call Mike Adams.
How did the numbers come in, Tim?
As far, Mike would know more about that, as far as low, high, or whatever, Mike would know a little bit more about that than I would, okay, as far as...
He's been kinda budgeted for it, I just wonder how they fell in there.
Yeah. He would be able to give you a little bit, as far as a comparison in years past, he'd be able to know that off the top of his head.
Maybe we can just ask that question?
Sure.
If he could give us, you could tell us an answer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, moving over to the consent agenda, so we have, we'll have one motion on Tuesday, that's a motion to authorize, to advertise a request for proposal, an RFP for an information technology consultant, Mr. Little?
Yes, Kristin Technology, our outside IT consultant, their contract is up at the end of May, and I've discussed this with staff extensively and gave a short email to Council about it, and my recommendation to Council would be to do an RFP for the outside consultant, and obviously Kristin can bid on it too. My understanding is, before this Council took their places up here two years ago, Kristin's been here for about four years, not mentioning anything about their work, it has nothing to do with it, but to do due diligence, I think, to do an RFP with an outside, for an outside consultant, see what the prices are, see what the expertise is. One of the, the bulk of the RFP, if Council wants to go in this direction, would be for the police department, as Chief Cole has mentioned to staff at staff meetings and probably to Council members, there's a lot of information technology that is coming down the line with police departments all over the country, body cameras, wearing body cameras in the storage of the video for that, and that's just one example, and we need somebody that is going to know about police technology more than anything, and my recommendation to Council is to do an outside consultant for that reason. If there's any discussion, any questions, Chief Cole's here, you can ask us now, but, oh, in conjunction with that, I have talked to Kristin Funari from Kristin, and even though their contract is up at the end of May, they have agreed, at least verbally at this point, to continue on, because we probably, if we would not go with Kristin Technologies, then what we would have to do, we'd probably, if it goes beyond May, they would agree to go on a month-to-month basis, but obviously it wouldn't be at the price, because when they came on board four or five years ago, it was a comprehensive contract for all the IT in the municipality, but basically, right now, we have them relegated to the police department, so what they would be paying, and I haven't talked with Kristin, I told her that I wanted to talk to Council and see what direction they wanted to go in, it would be at some form of truncated fee on a monthly basis, so they're agreeable to do that, to stay, stick with the police department right now if it goes past May. Any comments or anything?
Council?
Nothing.
Okay, moving over to resolutions, and Tim, we'll...
Yeah, the first one is a resolution authorizing advertising for bids for the 2016 road resurfacing program for the attached list of roadways throughout the municipality of Monroeville, and Mr. Hugus, if you wanted to comment on this a little bit?
In your packets, I gave you a infrastructure report that sort of explains how we went through, looked at the roads, why we came up with the list, and the list of roads that we're doing, along with the top twenty-five list of roads. You know, essentially, we're not paving any roads this year, there's no money to do it, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the budget, that paves one mile of road, we should be paving seven miles of road a year, so we're, now we're moving into the mode of road preservation, we have to do crack sealing, fog sealing, and chip sealing, just to preserve our roads until we're able to borrow more money to pave the roads that we need to pave, so essentially, there's not gonna be any paving, it's all gonna be roadway preservation.
This is all done off that, the presentation that you, yourself and Mr. Story gave us on the scheduling of the roads from like a one to ten?
That's correct.
And so this has all been decided off of that?
That's correct, it's based off the, we call it a Pacer rating.
Yeah.
And you can see in the list here what the Pacer ratings are, where the top twenty-five, we're at a Pacer rate of three, and that's very, very poor condition roads, you know, we get phone calls all the time about people wanting to know when the roads are gonna get paved, I mean, they're usually fours, fives at this point in time, and we have some roadways that are totally failed, if you look at Old Evers Creek Road, you look at Old Ramsey Road, you look at McGinley Road, we're talking about roads that are totally, totally failed, so if we don't do roadway preservation, seal them up, because if you chip seal them, you make them last for about five, six years, you don't do that, then you're gonna start to see more failures of roads, and then you're gonna get further behind the curve. I mean, typically, we should be paving, if you looked at the ten, or the top twenty-five list of roads, that's seven miles of roads, and it's about one point six million dollars, that's what we should be paving every year, and we only have two hundred and fifty thousand.
And we used to do well over a million dollars.
We did one point five million for probably five years straight, Steve.
Yeah, I do, I recall that.
And we were borrowing that money, though?
Yes, that's correct.
A lot of municipalities, they'll, they actually work that into their actual general fund, into their budget, and then what, over the past, what Monroeville's done is actually borrowed money, which maybe isn't the best practice, and, but there's give and take, because you're absolutely right, I mean, we have to take care of these things so the bottom doesn't fall out, but borrowing money to do these things maybe isn't the best practice, so...
And we're just trying to preserve them, that's really what the impetus is here, is that we can't afford to pave them, but we can't afford to do nothing with them, so we have to preserve them.
So...
I just want everyone to understand, we didn't pick these roads, I mean, the council people didn't say, I want this road or I want that road, this is all done based off of computer analysis and...
Yeah, I mean, every road is driven, and it's evaluated based on a scale, and that's how it's derived.
And that's probably the best way to do it.
Right, I agree.
That way, we're not up here arguing, I want mine done.
Agreed, but I just want the public to understand that, so if their road's not getting done, it's not because we picked someone else.
It's a simple mathematics problem, we have a hundred and ten miles of roads, we try to pave them every fifteen years, if you do the quick division, it's seven miles per year, it costs two hundred and fifty thousand a year, or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pave one mile of road, that comes out to about one point seven five million a year.
And that's just doing the paving, that wouldn't even be doing some of this preservation.
It's milling and paving.
Milling and paving.
Milling and paving, that's what we're...
Well, it's pretty simple, we don't have the money to do it.
We just don't have the...
Well, Paul, you're even saying, even if we could do the one point five million to pave, we'd still need to be doing all these other procedures to keep us from, the roads deteriorating further and further and further.
Right, I mean, even when we had the one point five million, we still did, we did crack sealing, we did fog sealing, we didn't do a whole lot of chip sealing, that sort of was the substitute for paving, just because it's, that was really the only alternative. We've tried other methodology, we tried micro-surfacing, it doesn't work, you know, the chip sealing is, and we did it two years ago on College Park Drive and Alpine Village Drive, you know, it's not a fan favorite, but it works.
Yeah.
And it makes it last.
Okay, so the public knows.
For what we're doing here, then, just so I understand, like, these all have a pretty high Pacer rating?
You mean low?
Well, nines and tens, isn't that good?
What page you on, Mr. Clary?
Yes, what page?
The second page of... The pink.
Well, they're all pink, what's it say?
Go to word five.
If you, Paul, go to the very top, it's gonna tell you seal, crack sealing, fog sealing.
So I'm looking at preliminary crack seal.
Okay, crack sealing is essentially going out and trying to seal the cracks up on the roads to keep the water from getting into it, so the crack sealing is differing, differed from, and in the fog sealing, we fog seal roads that we paved within the last three years, it's like a driveway sealer, and it preserves the road for an additional five more years.
So that just answered my question, because I obviously went down to word five and it's all Jamison Lane.
So the roads that we paved last year, for instance, which was Pine View, Woodhaven, Fieldstone, they'll get fog sealed this year, they'll reseal those roads, and it'll preserve them for another five years of its life.
And the crack seal...
Because, and not the number, because of the type of asphalt we use, and it's not our choice, it's superpaving, there's nothing super about superpaving, because it lets water in, and you don't want the water to go in, so when you seal it up, it keeps the water out, I'm sorry.
Isn't crack seal where they come and they spray?
They use a wand.
They use a wand?
Yes.
And that's where you see on the roads like black tar looking?
Yes.
They're out there doing, filling in all the cracks, just so that the residency, someone out there doing that, because I know I saw it for the first time on my street last year.
Yes, that's correct.
And there's a guy walking around with silver wand, and I'm thinking, what is he doing out there while he's filling the cracks?
He's sweeping it up.
And who performs that?
We'll put it off the bid, next month in front of you, you'll have bids for everything that you have here.
Does Public Works have any capability of doing any crack sealing, or?
You know, they do have the capability, but to be honest with you, when we priced it out, you, we can't buy the material for the amount that they put it down for. It's one of the things, they do it in bulk.
Right.
So it's cheaper for them to do it than for us even just to buy the material.
Okay, oh, wow. Okay, any other questions, Council?
And also on here, just for Ron's note, part of this is the McClure Road reconstruction, that money came from, if you remember, last year, we got money from the municipal authority of Westmoreland County, we call it MCO, because they put a water line down it, they did a lot of damage to the road, so they gave us the money because we could spend it at a better fashion, that road will be reconstructed as part of the program also.
Okay, a little out of order, Mr. McGrath, I mean, was it Wiltshire you were questioning?
Is that on the list?
No, sir.
It is not.
I got it.
It is, it is... Yeah. Floor is yours.
I've been in Monroeville residence for forty years, I've lived on Wiltshire Circle for thirty years, as of a month ago, it was thirty years. I've been talking about our streets for ten years, since Marshall Bond was here, I have an email here, I wrote back in nineteen, or two thousand and six to Marshall Bond, I dealt with Deb Harwick, she was our councilperson at that time, she moved on, Ron Harvey took over for her, I discussed this with Ron Harvey, he went up against Lois Drumheller, I had Lois Drumheller out there looking at our roads, and now she's gone, and now Ron Harvey's back, I never get to see anybody out there unless I call them and ask them to come out. The last time Wiltshire Circle was paved was nineteen eighty-eight, that's twenty-eight years ago, we have, you're talking about cracks, filling in the cracks, we have what they call is transverse cracks, I said, what the hell's a transverse crack? Well, that's a crack that goes perpendicular to the roadway, so when I leave my house in the morning to, I don't go to the office to go to the golf course, I'll say, because I don't go to the office anymore, I ran a business here in Monroeville for thirty years, paid my taxes religiously, as did most of the other people, if not all of them, on Wiltshire Circle, I have to drive across five, I call them potholes, they call them transverse cracks, it's, I mean, these are actual potholes that extend across the road from tip to tip, you can't avoid them, you can't drive around them, right now, at the, in the upper side of Wiltshire Circle in Verlinden, there's a pothole, an actual pothole, that you would visually see, it's right at the stop sign, and if you want to make a left onto Verlinden or a right, you have to get into the incoming lane at the intersection to go around that pothole, it's dangerous, that's that particular, they're all dangerous, and I like to put Council on notice that some of these cracks, transverse cracks, are so deep and so wide that we have kids playing up there, a kid falls, breaks an ankle, breaks an arm, something like that, I'm putting you on notice right now that we're gonna come out to the burrow if somebody gets hurt, and I don't have any kids myself, my wife, I walk the circle, if, at night, you're tramping one of these cracks, you know what, you're on notice. Since nineteen eighty-eight, Mr. Hugus indicated that the life expectancy of a road is fifteen years, we're pushing double that right now, you're talking about filling in cracks, is one of the things he tried to explain, they did that at one point in time to our transverse cracks, it had to be at least ten, maybe fifteen years ago, and the reason I say it's been that long is because the cracks have gotten deeper, you can see where they were sealed, the seal has cracked, and there's grass growing in them, there's grass growing from our roads, now, I've been getting the same lip service for ten years now, since I wrote that first email in two thousand and six, and they always say, well, you know what, it's not bad, we've got this Pacer rating, and I've got, I've got the documents here, I looked at the Pacer rating, that Pacer rating is, an individual extends at number five or number three, and they classify Wiltshire Circle as a number five, well, you know what, somebody's not doing their work, because it's certainly not a five, it's more like a two, maybe a three minus at absolute best, and you talk about, where's the money gonna come from to do this, and you're allocating a quarter of a million dollars, well, you know what, looking at your budget this year, you allocated twenty thousand dollars for asphalt and asphalt products, you know, they haven't spent a thousand dollars on asphalt and asphalt products, on Wiltshire Circle, or McClure, or Verlinden, or the other, Collingwood, they haven't spent a thousand dollars on products, two years ago, they did a short section of McClure, they corrected, tried to correct these transverse cracks, they dug them out, they put new paving in there, that's two years ago, less than two years ago, if you drive on them right now, they're already sinking to the point where you can feel it in your car, it's, it was, it's a very poor job, they did the lower portion of McClure, last year they did Collingwood, and I'm sure the same thing's gonna happen, because they used the same process, they didn't put enough asphalt in there, they didn't compact it, and now, within two years, it's sinking already, and it's, there's no cracks there yet, but they're soon to follow. You have twenty thousand dollars set aside for asphalt products, you have a capital budget of a million dollars, I don't know where all that million dollars is going, but it sounds like it's not going towards streets, last year you budgeted six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for snow removal and ice, removal, I guess you'd call it, and I know for a fact that you didn't spend six hundred and fifty thousand dollars on snow removal last year, you probably didn't spend fifty thousand dollars, because I think the trucks were probably only out once, maybe two times total, so you didn't have overtime pay, and so where's the other six, where's the other six hundred thousand dollars going that was allocated for that? Next year you won't have to buy any salt, because probably you already have salt that's left over from this year. Excuse me, I shot a ninety-two today, I'm...
I'd hate to see if you shot an eighty-five.
I planned on shooting a seventy-eight.
Thanks for being so honest.
Well, we understand your passion about it.
My most recent meeting was approximately a month ago, and I met with Mr. Little and Mr. Hugus, and we sat down for, I asked for fifteen minutes, they gave me a half an hour, and we discussed that, and everything they brought up about this Pacer rating, and they showed, I don't know if anybody's ever seen it, let's see if I can find it real quick here, they show you pictures of what roads look like, that should be classified as a number one, a number three, a number five, and ours certainly doesn't look like a number three, a number five. And while I'm looking for this, I'll make the point, our brother-in-law lives over near the Beryl Building, and he lives in a cul-de-sac, in the last twenty years, their cul-de-sac's been paved three times, I talked to my brother-in-law and my sister-in-law, and I'm thinking, you know what, we can't get it done in thirty years, and you've had yours done in three times, of course, the explanation I got there was, well, we were doing the other road and it was in the neighborhood and it looked like it needed it, so we'll do it, because it was a small job, it's a small cul-de-sac.
Well, things are definitely done differently now, at least for the past, you know, few years, I'm not sure when we've really paved roads in an objective manner with this Pacer score.
Thirteen years.
Thirteen years.
You've started the program.
So we're really, it is becoming more, like I said, objective, what I would suggest, and I think what, I think what Council would suggest as well, is what we can at least do is get Public Works out to your road to see what they can do, what their road crew can do.
I brought that up, okay, so you don't have the money, fix it, you don't, you don't have to pave it, fix the transverse cracks.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable... I think that's a reasonable thing we can have Public Works go out and see, because we're looking at two different things here. We're talking about the, the paving, crack sealing, fog sealing, which we put out the bid for a third party to do, a separate company.
Right.
But we do certainly have an in-house road crew that does a lot of work in the summertime. They haven't been out yet with the weather. But they will be starting up here soon, and I think what we can at least do is get our Public Works crew out there to see what can be done in that area.
I would appreciate that. And I'll tell you why I think it, it should be done, is number one, we're on the other side of Route two eighty-six. We don't have a school over there. We don't have a park. We don't have a playground. And we have a million dollar budget in Monroeville for parks and playgrounds. We don't have one in our neighborhood. Every other neighborhood have one. We don't have a fire department. My neighbor, his shed burned down, I think it was four years ago. And my wife sought start, she got on the phone, called nine-one-one. The fire department got there in time to put out the, the ashes on the shed. Again, the, the fire department that responds to us is in the industrial park off Haymaker Road. Is that Haymaker? And my office was in Mini Italia for twenty-five years. It takes me, it took me, the best I ever did was eight minutes to get from my house to the office, or from the office to there. And that's, by the time you get the fire engines out of the thing, we don't have parks, we don't have fire department. We have, the only thing we have over there is roads. It's unusual. I get, I'm excited when I see a, a burrow truck over there. It's because I wonder what the hell they're doing.
Well, what, I can assure you is, you're gonna see a burrow truck over there soon. And we'll get Public Works out there to see what they can do, if that's something they can do in-house. And certainly get some of these repairs going, but, you know.
At least the pothole, for sure.
Absolutely, the potholes and some of these other repairs that they've done, they have to reassess them. Because unfortunately, weather's, weather around here is, is tough on roads. And, yeah, two years for a patch repair, that's, that's pretty good, actually. Because things heave and move, and, but we can definitely get Public Works out there, and we'll do that.
Has there any, been any discussions to what to spend that six hundred thousand dollars on, from the snow and ice removal?
Well, first of all, it has to go through the rest of this year.
I'm sorry?
I just happened to have that report, because two residents called, not this gentleman, and asked about it. So I happened to have the numbers. Two thousand fifteen, two thousand fifteen, that's what they wanted the comparison on. We spent five hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars on seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven tons of salt. This year so far, in January and February, we've spent two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars on salt. And there's four, four thousand five hundred tons in stock for the beginning of next year, which ate up the, the salt boat.
So is it gone?
So.
No, and there was a lot more than two calls. That's, plus the overtime and-
Well, we also have this coming winter.
I'm just giving you the cost of the salt. This is just the commodity. So last year, there was five hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars spent on salt.
Five hundred thousand dollars spent on salt?
Five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars spent on salt.
And where did it go?
On the road.
When?
Well, you go January, first of all, you go January to December.
It hasn't been since December of this year.
No, 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 no.
January and February this year, there's been two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars used on salt. Two months.
Salt's expensive. But what we can assure you is, we're gonna get somebody out there, look at that road, and see what we can do.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your patience, and, you know what, it's been ten years. I, I, I'm not a cranky old man, okay? And, and I, I've seen a lot, I've watched some council meetings, not recently, not since the fiasco. But I'm gonna start watching them again, and, and I'll be back if something isn't done. Because it's just not safe.
We'll get her done.
And it's not fair. Okay, thank you for your time.
Golf better.
I hope you golf better.
Yeah, golf better, Rick.
All right, counsel. We're gonna move over to our, our next resolution. Tim, that's resolution number two.
Okay. Second resolution is a resolution authorizing nighttime milling, paving, and reconstruction work of Stroshine Road to minimize the impact of the high volumes of daytime traffic and to enhance traffic safety. Now, for the benefit of the public, Stroshine, Stroshine Road is a county road. And if you read the paper this past week, it's part of the money that when you have done your vehicle registration, I think there's twelve counties in the state that are collecting five dollars that go to the county for road maintenance, and that's part of the money that the additional five dollars that was collected off of your vehicle registration, I believe it was vehicle registration.
You're correct.
Okay. So that's where in, only Stroshine Road from Monroeville Boulevard to Route twenty-two is gonna be done.
Mr. Little, will they repair all the curbs? On both sides, and also like the, the island curb, like up by the Old Stone Church?
My understanding, if I may, my understanding of speaking with them, it's a curb-to-curb replacement. Especially the slow lanes in each direction. It's a total reconstruction of those lanes, because you can see the failure points in those. And that's, that's the impetus, why they wanna, they wanna have the nighttime construction, because they're gonna do a lot of reconstruction.
So curb-to-curb, as in they're fixing curb to curb?
My understanding.
Now, are they gonna every year do a county road based on that five dollar registration? Are we gonna be lucky enough that they're going to come in and repair one of their county roads here in our municipality?
That's an answer for somebody else.
Is that why you're smiling like that?
I have no idea.
We'll, we'll take what we can get.
There you go. Ask your mayor to look into it.
Okay.
Okay, item number, resolution number three is a resolution authorizing the municipality of Monroeville to request a greenways, trails, and recreation program grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Monroeville Community Park Court Rehab. This goes back to the pictures that Mr. Estock, the program director, showed to council during the budget sessions with the basketball hoop leaning over and other, the upheaval of some of the tennis courts up there. This is what this grant money is for.
Is there any match involved, Mr. Little?
Uh, I don't believe there is, no.
There isn't.
There isn't, okay.
I have a comment about that. I mean, the, so currently, Tim, maybe you can elaborate, because right now, there's, the courts are shut down, or at least some of them are.
Yeah.
Not all of them.
With one basketball court, because that hoop's leaning.
So is that gonna be now shut down and locked down until we find a way to pay for it?
Well, the one, yeah, the one court is, yeah, because of that basketball hoop. That one is. And I think the one tennis court is pretty bad, too.
Oh, yeah, you can't play on them, if you wanted to.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, like, as far as, I don't know how long this is gonna be, like, locked down. Is this something that, if eventually this has to be torn out to repair it, is that something we should do sooner than later, instead of just having a vacant court chained up and locked up?
Well, we can do that, but, you know, if, why are we applying for the grant then? I mean, or, that's why we're applying for the grant, to get the money.
To do it.
To do the whole thing, to do the whole destruction and everything.
Correct.
Do we have, do we have a idea of what the full, the whole ball of wax is gonna cost? I know the grant's for two fifty, but I mean, what's the actual cost for the whole repair?
I don't have that figure in front of me right now. Okay, I can get that for you, though.
Yeah, let's, let's get that, and we'll look further into this. Resolution number four.
Okay, resolution number four is a resolution exonerating the real estate tax collector from the collection of uncollected taxes for the year two thousand and fifteen. This is a housekeeping resolution that we pass, in fact, every community, at least every community should pass it, on the taxes that will be deemed as delinquent after counsel presumably will exonerate Mr. Folkerson, the tax collector. And the amount of the delinquency is a hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Am I correct, Mr. Folkerson?
You are correct.
Okay. Now, if you consider that we collect approximately nine million dollars in real estate taxes, I think that's pretty good, as far as the delinquencies are concerned.
You can get much better than that.
Um, these will now go to the delinquent tax collecting? Correct? There's one on here that, I mean, there's some on here that just, I don't understand why we have got, like Foxwood Swim Club. How can you, how can they not pay a tax?
If you would, please, Mr. Folkerson.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Mr. Folkerson.
Thank you.
Mr. Folkerson, how are you?
All right there, Mr. Col.
Yeah, I'm confused, I, I just picked up-
Don't be confused.
There's a few of them on here that, you know, I don't understand when you have a swim club that's collecting money from their residents to, to operate, and they're not paying their taxes to Monroeville, which is where they're located.
All right.
How do they keep being able to do that?
It's, they're bored and they don't pay their taxes. What do you want me to do?
Isn't there anything you can do to the swim club or something?
I think we should take the board and, I, no, really, you can't. You have to, they're delinquent. And so when they go to the delinquent, we charge penalty, we charge interest, we charge everything, and we request it. Now, if you would like, I can gather, there's a couple swim clubs on there. And you can decide that maybe you should shut them down.
Yeah. Is this list made available for the public to see?
If you would like it, it becomes a public record right now.
Okay.
You have it, it's public record. Now, it wouldn't be in public record in my office.
Right.
But once I give it to you, that piece of paper is public record. That's the rules of the game. But you have to be, you know, you bring things up, and you should be aware of the-
Well, you see the same, like, I mean, here's like Frank, I guess it's Franklin Brothers, B R O. Like, one, two, three, four, five times. How does something like that happen?
I don't really know that particular property, but-
Custom homes, same thing. I mean, it's not huge amounts, but-
They haven't paid, they have lots, and they haven't paid in the last ten years.
Abandoned.
And the lots are worth, maybe at that, on there, are probably worth about two thousand dollars apiece.
So what's the cost of going to place some liens on these kind of?
No, the liens are on there.
Oh, the liens are on there?
Yeah, that's not the problem.
Okay.
The problem is collecting the money from them. And they feel it isn't, um, I don't know what they feel, because you're, you're speaking of people, and you don't know how they feel about paying their taxes. But you can gather up a group of them that's been out there for a long period of time, and take them to Sheriff's Cell.
And what's the, are there stipulations with Sheriff's Cell? I mean, does that have to be a certain amount, does that have to be a certain timeframe, that they have to be delinquent?
No.
It's just the, it's the right of the taxing body?
To take them to Sheriff's Cell.
I asked a year ago, the solicitor that was sitting there, and he advised me, in, in front of all of you, that that Sheriff's Cell is an expensive thing, and, and sometimes you could come out of it on the losing end.
That is correct.
Because it costs five to six thousand dollars for a Sheriff's Cell.
Easily.
And if you don't get that much for the property, you lose money.
You do.
And the other thing he advised me of is, the school district is the big loser or collector of this, and they're the ones that should initiate this, because we're only getting-
All right, we have-
What, a tenth of it?
Yeah, I, I gave the auditors, they wanted a number of, of our total lien properties, liability. I gave them a total cost of seven hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. That's not a lot of money compared to what you're talking about. This is from nineteen seventy until the present time. Now, the school board, if they were, look at their delinquent taxes, you're probably talking at a probably eight million dollars.
Yeah, that, that's the figure Mr. Stubenport mentioned last.
So now you have eight million dollars, and you have five hundred thousand dollars. Now, you're willing to take that list and with the school board, and you say, all right, we're gonna go after some of these, and some of them belong. I mean, we have one property down on forty-eight, for example, down on Moss Side. It is, and I talked to Mr. Little on this. It's a piece of land that probably it's eight acres or nine acres, it's along the hillside. They have not paid taxes since nineteen seventy. They probably owe you about a hundred thousand dollars. It is Zone S. You would have to change, if you wanted to take this property and put it back on the books, there's another family that owns this, with a bunch of relatives. You take it to Sheriff's Cell, nobody's gonna buy that land because it's Zone S. So it would be fruitless to do it. Now, if you would change the zoning on this particular property and say, all right, it's, you know, commercial and so forth, now you've got a piece of property that's worth a bunch of money. So that's one of the reasons why you have about one of these major properties. But there's other people on there, that list, that, that, there are business people that owe you a little bit of money.
Well, yeah, I was looking at one that's like almost five thousand dollars, and, and I don't know if that's their plaza, or if that's the individual themselves.
Uh, you have to look at the person, the particular partial, and I wouldn't know it right offhand.
Okay.
But if they owe you five thousand-
What do they owe the school?
Fifty thousand. So there's where you wanna be, and you wanna get with the school and say, all right, we'll pay our fair share. We'll pay ten percent of the cost to get some of these parcels back on the tax rolls. That's a nice arrangement.
Yeah.
But I've heard this for over a year. I talked about it, we talked about it. I don't see any action.
Well, the school board was supposed to meet and help us in finding-
I, you know, you, you keep, they keep saying things, yeah, we'll meet, meet. You know, give me a list of, give you, not me, because I don't really deal with this thing. You give a list of ten, we're willing to pay our fair share of fifteen percent, you pay the rest, let's take it on. It isn't a hard thing to do, but it takes somebody to do the initiative.
Well, Pat, I, my contention was that if we would start doing that, our properties in a time, maybe everybody else would get the message.
Right.
Some people will, but you deal, a lot of these properties are not as, as easy as you might think.
I, no, I know, I realize.
You got hillsides, you got all kinds of, you know, you can't even find the ownership. Some of these owners, these people have died many years ago, and they're just, we don't know who owns it. Really, you could send a, a tax bill to them, you come back, and they don't know the owner. But that's, that's, you know, you, if you really wanna get involved, and you really wanna get, take five, and then start working your way down until you get to know the properties that you can really go after.
So are these just for twenty fifteen?
Yes.
Or is this what they owe as of twenty fifteen?
It's only twenty fifteen.
Because they've been exonerated in the past, probably.
Yeah, and they've been on the delinquent rules. You would, each piece-
Exonerated, but that's not the-
Yeah, each piece. Say you got five of them, you pick five out. I'll go give you how much they owe from, from the prior years. And I'll tell you how many-
Probably a lot of it, it's gonna end up being the same people.
Exactly.
Yeah, so you add how much the-
I can, you could take last year's list, run it down right beside, parallel, and you'll find out the same people. It's just the way it is. And a lot of reasons why they're on the list, really. People, most people in Monroeville will pay their taxes, ninety-eight percent, without a problem.
Which is great, yeah.
And then you'll get, this year, we'll probably wind up with over a hundred thousand worth of delinquent taxes collections. Because people buy and sell. And they, and when they buy and sell, that's when they pay the delinquent taxes. So you always have a constant, you know, rolling forward, rolling back. So, again, though, I think you've got a good point. I think if you take five, I think we discussed it with the, you discussed it with the school board, and do something, but don't-
Well, we talked about that last month, and we thought they were gonna come back.
We keep talking about, I heard this discussion six months ago.
Yeah, well, they came to us last month, and we thought they were gonna come back and give us an answer as to what they had decided, so.
Whatever.
Maybe Tuesday.
Yes.
Very specific. School district's on here.
Yes. What that is, there's properties that are in Monroeville that is owned by the school district, and also Monroeville. But I, I, well, I brought that up to Mr. Little lately, about two months ago, and I said, here's a group of properties that Monroeville owns, and they're, you know, they're delinquent on my rules, only because of past Berchheimer, when they took over. They had a whole list of property, probably, I think I gave you ten of them. They were owned by Monroeville, they were into delinquents.
For sale, that's quite a complex.
Anyway, what it is, is that they, they're partials of land that Monroeville owns, and they inherited, and they're not, they're not off the tax rolls yet. And the solicitor will take them off sooner or later. He, he just became aware of it, that's not fair to him.
We should have for sale signs on those, then.
That's up to you. That's up to you to find out that particular property, look at it, and decide if you want to sell it or not.
So there's a few things here we need to research, that's a, that's a good point to bring up. There's a few things here we need to research, that's a, that's a good point to bring up as far as finding these properties, and it's a lot of labor.
I gave, you have the list. I gave the list.
Of the properties we own?
Yes, I have given that to, Joe's not here and I don't wanna pick on him when he's not here.
Okay.
But I gave him-
Is that that?
Yeah, didn't I give you the property, the 12?
Were you, you just get here?
No, I just, he's such, he's such a nice man, you don't see him. He's almost invisible.
Out of sight, out of mind.
That's right, that's the way to do it, Joe. Anyway.
Okay.
So there's some things we can look into-
No, there is, there is.
But this just takes this off of the tax collectors, um-
Yeah, you're just taking it off mine, you're shifting it.
And moving it to the delinquents, and we can still act on it, obviously the delinquent tax collector-
Right.
Will now collect these taxes or go after them.
We will go after-
Long-term, council could look into some of these bigger offenders.
First thing we do, we sent out a letter, uh, which will be going out this week, and that letter will say that we will, we'll lien your property in the next 60 days. And, and the cost will be $20, just to send the letter out. That's the cost of the, and, and then it costs you, them another $25 once we lien. Now, that'll, all that money goes back to Monroeville. That doesn't go in my office, that goes directly to Monroeville. And, and they, we charge interest from the day one, once we go to delinquent, from March 1st to whenever they pay, there's an interest factor of 6%. So, that's according to the law.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Folkerson.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome. Did you want me to ask this, because I'm gonna go home?
Okay, well, I'm gonna discuss one more thing while Mr. Folkerson's here, something we talked about today, actually, as well. There is a Act 77, for anyone that's not aware of what that is, it is done by Allegheny County. If you have your home in a trust of any kind, whether it's a revocable, irrevocable, um, if, if trust is put onto your property, you are now considered incorporated and not privately owned. Therefore, Allegheny County is now saying you are no longer eligible for the senior discount, that you may now have 30% off.
That is correct.
Um, you will no longer be eligible for that because they don't see it as a privately-owned home, they see it as an incorporation. Now, a lot of people aren't aware of this, the county's kind of getting caught up with notifying the municipalities, which of course were one of them. And as they happen, the tax bills are changing for our residents, so this mainly has to do with the seniors because of the, you know, a lot of people have done them in trust, and a lot of people have not been made aware by their attorneys as they're setting up a trust. This is now something, they're going to lose that benefit of their senior tax-
Right.
Credit.
They lose the 30% for the municipality, and they lose the 30%-
Cent for the county.
Yes.
But the homestead will not come into play.
That's because the Allegheny County decided not to go further.
Go for that.
They could go for that some years from now.
But it's not right now.
No, they-
But so anybody that has their property in trust, if they haven't found you yet, they eventually will, if you're considering putting your stuff into trust, please bring that up to your attorney or your tax-
Take it under consideration.
Take it under consideration as to whether you think it's a good thing or a bad thing for yourself. So I just wanted everyone to be aware.
Thanks, Lou.
And thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Moving over to ordinances, Mr. Ratcher?
The first ordinance is an ordinance amending ordinance 1512 authorizing the Monroeville Foundation, Inc. to offer naming opportunities for facilities in the community park via application subject to final approval by municipal council. And this is the ordinance that has previously been on the table for the last two months, I believe.
Yeah, if I could add to that, I mentioned to council that there, back in February, I mentioned in an email and also at the meeting that the Monroeville Foundation, who is the nonprofit 501(c)(3) that takes the donations for the naming rights to the park, they requested a nominal fee to keep their coffers going. And those council members that did respond back to me said that 5% seemed to be fair. Is council still agree, agreed to that? Because I have put in italics, in addition to that ordinance. And because it's a decent change, a significant change, I should say, that's, the ordinance will have to be re-advertized again, and it can be adopted in May if council wants to proceed in that fashion.
If they're gonna take the 5%, are they gonna follow through with the name, taking care of getting all the work done and all that, or are they just running the money through them?
Uh, by all the work. What do you mean by all the work?
Well, if I wanna buy a brick, and here's what I want set on it, who's taking care of putting that on that brick?
The Monroeville Foundation.
So they will take care of making sure that the placards or the whatever is done correctly? And that's what, we're giving them the 5% basically to cover their time and their costs?
Correct, as, as far as the logistics of it, yeah, the Monroeville Foundation will take care of that. But obviously, it's your approval, because the Monroeville Foundation has no authority to put up a sign, the sign would run through this council, in actuality, it'd probably run through the planning, I don't know if it would run through the planning commission, but you would have to approve any kind of signage that would go up there commemorating somebody's mother, father, or something like that, the Smith Pavilion or something like that.
But it wouldn't be for us to follow to make sure the transaction actually goes through, it would be-
No, the Monroeville Foundation, well, I would do that.
Okay.
I would end up doing that.
Okay.
That's okay.
Okay.
And that's nothing in, in, Mr. Ratcher, so you, that's a significant change, we can't just add that for Tuesdays?
No, no, you would have to, yeah, based on what it is, I think you have to re-advertise it.
Okay. Okay, and-
Next, we have an ordinance authorizing the proper officials of Monroeville to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the Public Works Bargaining Unit effective September 1st, 2015 to December 31st, 2019.
Any questions, council, comments? Seeing none? Very good, we're gonna move over to our reports of municipal staff, Mr. Ratcher?
No further report.
Mr. Little?
Yeah, I, yeah, I do have something to say. There has been a lot of dialogue here this evening about roads, and we talked about going for a grant for park and recreation. And that comes under the heading of capital equipment and capital projects. Mr. Lally and I will be doing, putting together a capital improvement program, which hasn't been updated for the last two years. And we have a capital improvement program that, that anybody, I believe it's online. And if you look on the first page, it's through 2014 through 2018, and there's a total of $16 million worth of capital items, either projects, roads, IT equipment, vehicles, whatever the case might be, that this community would have to purchase during that time. And, and I also want to, I was looking when Mr. McGrath was speaking, and under our debt service, and council knows this, and the majority of the public knows it, but it's good to repeat it. We pay every year in a debt service. A debt service is our bill on bonds, $3.2 million, which is over 10% of our general fund budget. And we have Mr. McGrath coming up here, and he's asking about his road, rightfully so, Mr. McGrath. We have Dr. Edelstein coming here worrying about a slide. And these are all, this is all money that costs hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars. And during my budget message, I mentioned to council that our capital program is going to start showing some wear and tear, so to speak, in the spring, and we're here. We are putting, we started two years ago when we raised taxes. I said to council, we have to adopt a policy of paying as you go because we cannot float any more bonds. And now, we're two years later, and I knew this day would come, where you're gonna start having people coming up here complaining more about roads, our tennis courts and basketball courts are deteriorating. And I mentioned to council and to the public, we need a dedicated revenue to our capital improvements. Because we don't have enough money unless we raise taxes, and that's another issue, we don't have a dedicated revenue to capital items. You can go float a bond for $5 million, but you're gonna have to pay for it for the next 20 years. And that's what we're doing right now. Our credit cards are maxed out, so to speak. So we're gonna get more complaints like this with things deteriorating in the community. Stormwater facilities, which council is aware of, and council has mentioned publicly that according to the EPA and the DEP in, in the state, we have stormwater facilities that have to be corrected, and that's not this council that's doing this, it's the state that's coming in and saying we have to do it. And it's also the EPA and the DEP is saying it about the sanitary sewers, too. And this just isn't Monroeville, this is communities all across the country for that matter. So we have some problems that we have to address, and they're not gonna get any easier. But just so Mr. McGrath knows and Dr. Edelstein knows, these are the problems this council's faced with. You don't wanna raise taxes, you know, and tax people out of Monroeville, we're trying not to do that. But in the meantime, you have people coming up and complaining, and I'm not saying, rightfully so, this is your time to complain, so we're aware of it. And I'm aware of it, Mr. Hugus is aware of it, we're all aware of it. But just to let you, just to let you know, we're paying $3.2 million every year out of a $32 million budget on debt service. And I wanna mention another thing, too, about the money we've saved with salt. Yeah, we have saved some money with salt, but, Mr. Edelstein is coming here, Dr. Edelstein about Red Oak Court. We don't know, that road may slide in October. And then we're gonna go out, and I'm not saying using that money to fix Wilshire Court is not money well spent, it is money well spent. We don't know. If you have a little bit of money you're saving, you should hold on to that money until the end of the year, see where your fund balance is, and then quite possibly do that next year. Now, that doesn't mean if you have something in an emergency, you're gonna have to do it. But that's just good financial sense, just because you save some money and you do this with your budgets at home, just because you saved a little bit of money, that doesn't mean you go out and you buy a Lincoln or a Cadillac. You may still have to buy a Hugo, all right, if they still make them. But I just wanted to mention that to the public, to council. We have some problems here with capital items and paying for them. And until we get some kind of dedicated revenue paying for them, we're gonna have to still pay as you go. A million dollars does not go too far this day and age in a community this size.
Excuse me, ma'am, two minutes to-
Actually, I'm sorry, that, that portion of the meeting's closed, but on Tuesday, there'll be another time for you can, where you can speak. Mr. Hugus?
I have nothing more.
Mr. Lally?
I do have one thing to add to the conversation of what Tim just discussed. When you talk about commodity purchasing, we are under obligation to purchase X amount of tons per year regardless of the winter conditions. That contract this year was for an aggregate of 8,000 tons, I believe, at $59 on average, which was down from 69 last year. So no matter what we do, we are locked into a commitment with the supplier to purchase X amount of salt. Positive side, as Mr. Little said, it will create a surplus going into next year for the salt that we have not used. So there is a positive side to that, but once again, we will have a minimum required amount that we have to purchase, and I just wanted the public to be aware of that. That's all I have.
And moving on to council, Mrs. Gatos, any announcements this evening?
Well, since I already talked about the Act 77, alls I have to just, is the Senior Center. The Senior Center has started back with their monthly luncheons, and Monday, April 25th, will be their next one at 12 o'clock, $6 a person. They are having meatloaf with gravy, baked potato, corn dinner roll, blueberry cake, and a beverage, and if you would like, you can also stay and play bingo after for a dollar card. Ticket deadline is Wednesday, April 20th, and I don't know where you're getting the meal for six bucks, but it's always good food there, so, anyone interested in that? And Joe, can you put that picture up, please?
I'm sorry, the, what was?
The, the dinner dance fundraiser? Did you give that to them?
We did not have that in the computer.
Ugh.
We have it on the pitch board, but I don't have a picture to put on there, I'm sorry.
Okay, maybe we could have it for Tuesday?
Sure.
Okay. Um, they're having a dinner, dinner and dance fundraiser. It's gonna be live music, it's the Woo-Hoo Band, which is, a gentleman from the Woo-Hoo Band works for the Water Authority, so they're even using some local talent. It's gonna be Friday, May 20th, from 7 to 10. They're gonna have hors d'oeuvres, raffles, and it's BYOB, which, if anyone doesn't know what that means, it means, doesn't mean bring your own boyfriend, it means bring your own booze. Uh, it's $20 a ticket, and this is for all of Monroeville residents, you don't have to belong to the Senior Center, but it's certainly a great way, if you've never been there, to experience it, and it should be a really good time. So Friday, May 20th, from 7 to 10, $20 for pre-sale tickets. You can contact the center if you need to for any questions at 412-856-7825, but certainly something to think about. And with that, that's all I have tonight.
Very good, Mr. Harvey?
Report on the Rivertown and the pedestrian crossing. Letter received from the county says, we are in receipt of your correspondence dated February 16th regarding your request to install a crosswalk 312 Center Road. And basically, it goes on denying that for several reasons, and actually, after they explained it and did their traffic study, I agreed with them. I did put in a request, though, to allow us to still post the signs, the warning signs to traffic that there was pedestrian crossings, you know, a chance of people crossing in front of them on the, in the Center Road area of the Rivertown. And I think Paul, you forwarded an email to them?
I did, I sent an email to the county, I've not received a response.
Okay, so that's where that stands. The crosswalk was denied, and I do understand it. Anybody that wants a copy of the letter or wants to see it, I have. We discussed a little bit of this earlier, I'll just go through it quickly. For those of you that have not heard, in November of 2013, Pennsylvania Act 89 was passed called the Local Use Fund. And it was the law that allowed counties in Pennsylvania to add $5 to the charge on your vehicle registration for the purpose of road and bridge maintenance. Allegheny County has added that charge to our vehicle registration starting this year. And after investigating to find out if in the law there was a way that they distribute those funds locally, there is not, the county totally gets to decide where that money goes. The two assistants at Joe Markozik's office and Mr. Brewster's office both got back to me and said the county is not going to distribute that money to the municipalities, they're gonna use it to fix county roadways and bridges. So I was kinda hoping for some road maintenance money there, but that struck out on that one. Calls on exactly what happened, what is happening on the old Penn Monroe site. I didn't know, I talked to Mr. Wilson, that's his ward. I just got a couple calls that said it looked like it was moving and then it stopped and-
Well, I'll give you a quick reader's guide just first. In 2010, a site plan was approved to place 130,000 yards of earth in that hole, bring it up to the raw 22 level and build a hotel. After it was approved, it sort of went dormant, we didn't hear from them. Over the holidays of this year, actually, end of 2015, a new owner shows up, says, I'm wanting to re-energize the project. And he wanted to start by demolishing the structures that were involved, there was some on 22 and one on Duff Road. He secured his demolition permits, then he proceeded to clear, clear four acres of land without the permits. So he got a legal stop work order from myself, from Allegheny County, and from the DEP. So they're sorta at a halt until they get their, all their permits in place.
Thanks. Again, that was just questions that were proposed to me. I had a resident send me a picture of, and actually, it came through Jamie Storey, I believe, of the parking on Raspberry Drive in Elmar.
Yes.
Uh, are those, and they said they took the signs down?
It appears that some of the signs have been removed.
Are we gonna repost them and then enforce it?
We sent it over to Public Works to have them erect the signs and CC the chief on it, so the police can warn it.
Okay, thank you. I did get an email concerning speeding on Monroeville Boulevard, I realize that's not my ward, but it was really a complaint about traffic speed on residential roads and some of the primary roads all over Monroeville. And I wanna report that I attended a rally at, in Harrisburg with Chief Cole, because there's a bill on the, you know, heading towards the House that would allow local police to use radar. We went up in, in favor of it, to support it. I can't tell you how that vote's gonna go up there, but we did attend the rally and, and showed our support because it would make it much easier for the local police to enforce speed in, in the local communities around here if they were permitted to use radar. I do gotta tell you that in my experience, in my 25 and a half- I do gotta tell you that, in my experience, in my 25 and a half years, we always seem to get and stop and write a citation to the person that complained. They always identified themselves, "I'm the one that complained about this." So either way, if that starts, I think the idea was to, if that bill passed, there was gonna be a warning period of time, like three months, where anything stopped by radar would be a warning. To let you know they're out there and getting ready to start enforcement. So, last but not least, I just got this today, so I'm sorry. The Etheran Vessel Outreach fundraiser. It is a nonprofit organization that apparently helps young adults the opportunity to pursue their high school diploma. Maybe they didn't get it, didn't have it, never had an opportunity for it. Either way, they have become a nonprofit organization that is going to run the concession, main concession tent at the U.S. Open Golf Championship in Oakmont. They are looking for volunteers. I don't want to bore you and read the whole handout, but they are looking for anywhere from 15 to 20 volunteers a day to work from 11:00 in the morning till close. And I have a handout here, if anybody's interested. And other than that, if you are interested, volunteering your time for this worthwhile cause and working the U.S. Open, Mr. Tom Hillman at 412-600-2555. And that is all.
Mr. Harvey? Mr. Johns?
Yes, sir. Monroeville Convention Center. Thursday, April 7th through the 10th, Just Between Friends. Showmasters Gun Show is going on April 9th and 10th. Steel City Con will be there April 15th through the 17th. Showbiz National Talent will be there April 23rd and 4th. CS Kim Karate Tournament is also there on April 23rd. Pan Spring Coin Show is May 5th through the 7th. Kids Artistic Review, May 6th through the 8th. The Elvis Live Concert featuring--
Elvis?
I can't be right. The Elvis Concert featuring, I thought it said Ron Harvey, but it says Ryan Phil. That's why I hesitated.
Right off the bat, nobody's--
The Annual Pennsylvania Polka Festival is Saturday, May 14th and 15th. And with that, I'm done.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Calery?
Ron covered it pretty much, but I had just one question about the Monroeville Boulevard speeding. Is there anything we can do outside of waiting for the radars? Are there any calming devices or something? That is a really, that's a little bit of a speedway. I was just wondering.
Well, the chief is certainly--
I was looking back there, and he was smiling at me.
The chief's aware of it.
Yeah, you know I'm calling. I don't have-- I think I said--
You just sent me an email about it.
Yeah, we're currently, again, just for the motoring public here at Monroeville, we're currently in an aggressive driving enforcement program. It's a program sponsored by the state. We've already done Route 22. As Councilman Harvey said, in order to do speed enforcement, you got, it really takes two or three officers right off the bat, maybe as many as four. You have to set up a device called an NRAD device, which we have access to, or you gotta get, you know, strips painted on the road with a timing device, or a lot of time speeding, but it just, it's cumbersome, it takes time to do. Whereas, we could take one officer and give them radar gun and tell them to go into a neighborhood, because we've got complaints on speeding, we could enforce it a whole heck of a lot easier. So that's one of the issues with, with the speed enforcement in general. So we are, we can do some speed enforcement. We're talking about lower Monroeville Road, I think, more than anything else. Monroeville Boulevard itself, but also the lower Monroeville Road is what we're talking about by, by the--
Rudy Subs.
Yeah, well, even Rudy Subs is obviously one here, but, I mean, along here, all that. And, you know, one of the other things that, again, on local roads, as the vehicle code states, we have to do, we have to give a minimum of 10 mile an hour over. And not that we can't get people going faster than 10 mile an hour before we stop them. Monroeville Boulevard's 35, so you're gotta be, you can't be stopped, you're doing 46. We'll be able to do that, there'll be enough people doing that. But it's, it's a little bit more, again, it's not as many as you would think. So without, all that being said, is, you know, we can do something with enforcement. One of the things with this aggressive driving, we're supposed to stay on state routes, you know, 2248, 286, 130, 993. But we can also do feeder roads, as they call them, and Monroeville Boulevard, obviously, is a feeder road. So we'll get some enforcement on that. I think that's--
Chief, clarify, because I had a resident asking about, like, in their neighborhood, you know, like, about putting up stop signs to help with, just help with the speeding in the neighborhood. And I had informed them that you cannot use a stop sign as a way to reduce speeding on a street.
That is correct. It has to be at an intersection. Of course, it has to be also with a traffic engineering study done.
Okay.
And as Mr. Hugus is well aware, it has to go through that before we can then get an ordinance to put up a stop sign. If, you know, you do make, if you do complain about speeding, for one of the first questions I ask people, "How close do you do a stop sign?" Because it seems like the people are speeding in a residential street, they're really not stopping for a stop sign.
Right.
So then we can sit on a stop sign, have a little talk with them there. So that's what we try to do. And we did do that effectively over off of Foxwood here, Hazelwind, that area, a little while ago. So we will try to do that, and we certainly give us complaints. If you have complaints, get them to the council, people work to the police department, we'll follow them up. You know, hopefully--
Well, see, that's something I didn't know. I had just basically told the resident that, you know, we couldn't, she had asked about the possibility of having a stop sign installed in the neighborhood to slow the traffic. And I gave, told her what I was told.
You cannot do it, you can do it at intersections, but it's, you gotta do a--
Right.
--traffic engineering study before you can get it in. All our stop signs currently are covered by traffic engineering studies and are all properly posted. So, so we, in most of the areas where we have speeding, and I shouldn't say most, I mean, like, the areas, obviously, lower Monroeville Road, Monroeville Boulevard, Saunders Station, Haymaker, those busiest streets--
Yeah.
Garden City Drive, there are stop signs along Garden City Drive--
Right.
--at different intersections. But you just can't put one in the middle of this block of a street--
Right.
--to try to stop some, slow people up. You can't do that.
So if they're having trouble, then we can have someone sit by a stop sign, at least make sure that they're stopping where they should be.
Have somebody in there, they're stopping for the stop sign, and we can do some enforcement there. That's what we try to do. Anybody calls me about speeding in the neighborhoods, I ask them, "What block are you in? How close are you to an intersection? We can maybe sit some there and have some type of enforcement." But speeding's tough. We do, we'll do some in the neighborhoods here this summer, too.
Okay.
We'll get it on some of those streets with the NRAD, and we'll get that done. But it is more problematic and a little more cumbersome, I guess is the word.
Right.
And hopefully, we'll get radar. We've been trying to get a radar, you know, Councilman Harvey's quite familiar with the radar program. We've been doing it 30 years now, for me, even longer for you, trying to get it through. It appears, at least it seems, at the state level, and this is just in a statement from other people, enough organizations now are backing this, from the Pennsylvania State Police, the FOP, Chiefs of Police Organization, Leagues of Municipalities, City Organization, Mayor's Organization. There are a lot of people behind it.
Right.
I think we probably have, we have the best shot, shot this time around at this legislative session of getting a radar bill that locals can use radar. That's what the belief is.
Very good. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Real quick, Linda, you know what I've found in four years of listening to residents complain of speeders in a certain area, my plan? In four years, what I've found, many, many, many complaints, it's those same residents that are doing the speed.
I can't tell you how much it is.
Right. But ultimately, I mean--
Hey, I'm done. I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, chief. But it's ultimately an extension of neighborhood watch or crime watch. If something's not right in your neighborhood, whether it's something that just doesn't seem right, or a speeder, or people blowing stop signs, just let your council person know, and we'll forward it on to the police department, and we'll do what we can do about it. So, Mr. Calery, do you have anything else for this evening?
That's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
I have nothing for this evening. I'll save mine for Tuesday.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson?
I have a couple things. I just want to thank Public Works for the demolition of the House on Garden City Drive. Did a terrific job, and they're repairing the landscape, and they just did a very good job. We only had two guys there working, but they had it done in like four days. So, and also, Public Works repaired the guardrails on the western portion of Evergreen Drive as you go down and you're going to enter onto Old William Penn Highway. There was a truck that crashed into the guardrails, and this is probably a year ago. The truck was running from the police, and that's where they caught him, because they couldn't make the turn and went right into the guardrails. So they were able to correct those. I want to thank all the public for coming tonight. It's interesting, it's important that we get to know their needs. And I think we should reevaluate some of our areas that we're going to, I'm gonna use the word paving, but it's not really paving, but repairing. And I believe that we should look at Mr. McGrath's area. 18 years is a long time. Other than that, I'm done. Thank you.
Very good. Just an update, council, the Home Rule Charter Review Board, and also the residents, too, they've have a couple, they've had a couple meetings under their belts here. And they've come to, actually, they have four changes that they've agreed on so far, so they're, they're moving along nicely. Some of these changes are things that they just have to do because of state legislature and things that have changed on the state level. But I guess, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that they're moving along nicely. They have four changes they've agreed on so far. All of this is gonna be presented to council in detail and to the public in detail over a long period of time. And I'll try to notify you as that moves forward. The 21st Annual Jack Sedlec Memorial Cleanup Day is on Saturday, April 23rd, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Participants will receive a free tee shirt. Looks very good there. Register by Monday, April 18th, in the Recreation Department. You can join as a group or a individual, clean up a roadway, a park, a neighborhood, and it's always a great turnout. And then afterwards, there will be an appreciation picnic at the Community Park West with food, good company, and many chances to win raffle prizes. But once again, that is Saturday, April 23rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. It may be sunny, it may be snowing, who knows with this weather, but--
It's cold.
But people will be out there cleaning up garbage, so please, please register. Once again, register deadline is Monday, April 18th, in the Recreation Department. And speaking of the Recreation Department and the weather, the community pool will be opening soon--
Oh, God.
--at the end of, at the end of May, May 28th, Saturday, May 28th. But the reason why I bring it up now is because you can purchase your pool pass at an early bird rate, early bird savings, and that is good until May 1st. So if you want to join the pool this year, now's your time to do it. And you can, once again, all that information is on the website or also here at the Recreation And we'll stick with the same theme, just a brief announcement about the parks, the bathrooms and the water in the parks. With this, with this weather being warm and cold, warm and cold, none of the water is on yet, so some people have been complaining about maybe some of the bathrooms not being unlocked, but it's, it's a weather-related issue. We're gonna get them opened as soon as we can, once the, the weather stays steady here.